Okay, let's call, call the meeting to order. Pursuant to Governor Baker's July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two revised order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting room. BLG thirty-eight, seventeen eighteen. Meetings of the Gertrude Hill Regional School District School Committee will be conducted in person and remotely before the notice. In-person attendance is limited to school committee members, superintendent, and district school administrators. No in-person attendance members of the public will be permitted at this time. Agenda items listed both reasonably anticipated by the fair, not all items listed may in fact be discussed. Items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by CTFP in the school committee recorder and will be broadcast. Once transcribed and approved, minutes will be made public and posted on our website. So let's start with a roll call vote. Anne Hutchinson?
Here.
Jason St. Peter, here. Sean Stevens?
Here.
Ali Von Verpony? Not here, Molly Thomas? Not here, Bill Fields, here. Diane Singer?
Here.
Cory Spray?
Here.
Ripponi? Not here.
And Molly's here.
Molly's here now, Molly? There she is, great. And Steve Anlon?
Yes.
Minutes of June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, you have a motion. So. You have a second. Motion by Bill, second by Sean, any discussion?
One minor point on page eleven. Peter discusses about changing language going forward from de-leveling to leveling off.
It's leveling off.
About it being leveling up.
It's leveling up, okay. Your turn. And with that one minor change, roll call vote, Anne?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Molly?
I'm gonna abstain, I wasn't here.
Bill?
Yes.
Diane?
Yeah.
Cory?
Aye.
And roll aye, so it's unanimous. Peter, the superintendent's report.
Okay, um, if, and sorry, we're having some, some minor technical issues here. If Sharon is into the meeting, she could share a brief update and if she, I'm not seeing her, if she's not in, uh, maybe I'll, I'll share it, uh, for her. Typically, we, we'd start, um, with good news, there's a lot of stuff on this agenda, so I think, I think we'll skip that. And, and I don't see our student members. So if they were here, I'd recognize them, but, uh, they're either working or vacationing. So, so that's okay. I think I'll, I'll share the stuff that Sharon was gonna share. Uh, the governor signed the budget today. Uh, and there are three or four things that are really important in the, in the budget. The first is the, uh, additional sixty dollars per student is going through, which isn't a ton of money for us, but it's something, it's better than, than thirty dollars, uh, per student. The, the next bigger one that's really important is, uh, regional transportation was funded at eighty-five percent. So that's really pretty good and, and unusual. And then the, the third one, and you may remember, oh, Sharon's joining us now. Sharon, I, I started, uh, sharing this, so I, I talked a little bit about, the sixty dollars per student and, uh, the regional transportation. Could you just finish up the update on the budget and, and share a little bit about, uh, the food being covered by the state?
Yes, um, the good news is, in the budget that was passed yesterday, Massachusetts will be funding universal free meals for the two, twenty-two, twenty-three, school year. So everyone will have free breakfast and lunch, thanks to this Commonwealth.
Great, thanks Sharon.
And did you cover the circuit breaker as well, Peter?
I didn't get, mention that too, thank you.
Circuit breaker will be covered at seventy-five percent and the additional good news on that is they're also covering the transportation part of that at seventy-five percent. And in some cases, transportation to our outer district schools actually is more expensive than the tuition to the school. So that, that's a benefit to us as well. So between that and the eighty-five percent on the transportation, we'll be doing, we'll be doing well.
Great, okay, thanks Sharon, I really appreciate it and, and thanks for joining us.
Sorry for, it was tough getting on.
Yep, okay, cool. Um, so the, the next things, there, there are two that are fairly straightforward and one that's a little more complicated. We've got. Okay.
Erica, do you wanna ask a question?
Hi guys, Erica Milky, three sixty Park Street, and who's the tonic? Um, sorry to interrupt, Peter, I was just curious, you said that the part of the budget today was from thirty dollars a student to sixty dollars a student, and I just don't understand the, the context, can you explain like, what that means?
Yeah, the, so the, um, some student, some districts get, significant additional resources because historically they're underfunded. Uh, districts that are seen as, as fairly funded, get an addition, or for the last several years have gotten thirty dollars more per student. Uh, this year, because it's a good budget year, uh, each, each district is getting sixty dollars more per student. So you could take sixty and multiply it by the roughly twelve hundred, uh, students that we have and, and, and that's an additional allocation we're getting, uh, from the, from the state.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sure. Um, so going back to the other thing, uh, we've got a request from the high school, through the Project Connection Transition Program, uh, to do, uh, overnight field trip for rising ninth graders. And they would camp on Tuesday, August second at the Ashley Brook Falls Campsite. Uh, Mike Powell and Gordy Soul, uh, would be the chaperone for these ten students, they've got lots of experience and I strongly recommend you approve it.
Do I have a motion? I move, you have a second. Motion by Bill, second by Sean, any discussion? Here is, I'm singing. Roll call vote, Anne?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Cory?
Aye.
And I have two unanimous.
Okay, so that's great. The next one is to accept a donation, so, uh, Scott and Jennifer Annan have donated their two thousand and six Honda Accord to the automotive program at the high school, uh, which is very generous of them, and I'd like, you to consider voting, uh, to accept that donation.
Do I have a motion? I move to accept it.
Second?
Okay, second by Molly, a motion by Jason. Any discussion? Wonder how bad it is? Roll, roll, roll.
Okay, so Anne, Steve's doing a roll call vote on accepting the donation.
Yeah, you guys just froze on my end, I'm on a not-so-great internet connection and, in a storm, so aye.
Uh, Jason?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
Diane?
Yeah.
Cory?
Yes.
I vote yes with unanimous.
Okay, so then the next one, and, and there are two parts connected to this. Uh, I have a job description for you all, um, which is a new job description for the executive assistant to student services. And the job descriptions in your packet, this person works really closely, uh, with our director of student services. So the, the really two parts to this, uh, one is, I, I'd like your approval for the job description, the second is, I'd like, um, your approval to, uh, move this position out of the, Unit C contract where it previously had been as a secretary role, to an independent position. The, the rationale behind that is almost everyone in this office is either an administrator or, uh, independent employee and the assistant to the student services director deals with a lot of highly confidential special education, materials. So Kate and I worked on this, um, uh, updated job description and, and the, the additional request is to vote to move the position out. I've consulted with the co-presidents of Unit C and they're, uh, they understand the context and they're amenable to, uh, to this.
So the first motion to accept the moved out description for the executives assistant of student services.
Yeah, and, and Jason actually has two motions that he could read.
So should I read all? There'd be two to discuss.
Read the job description one first and, and then second, read the, moving them out of the, out of the unit.
Okay, so, uh, I move to remove, I move to remove the assistant to the director of student services from Unit C bar and to place them into the independent. Number two, well, let's do one at the top, we'll pick two votes. Do you have a second?
Second.
So motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing on, roll call vote, Anne?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Cory?
Aye.
And I have two unanimous. Next. I move to approve the job description to be assistant to the director of student services. You have a second.
Second.
So my only question here is, the motion has a different title than the, the job description.
All right, do you? Okay. I'll fix it.
Any, anyone else?
Aye.
Uh, Jason?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Cory?
Aye.
And I have two unanimous.
Okay. And, and I have one, um, the additional, uh, motion, and, and this is connected to the, greenhouse aid position which sits within the cooperative group contract. And, and, um, remember when we raised the, the, uh, para salaries and the food service salaries, we missed one additional one, uh, which was the, the greenhouse aid position. So Paul Gibbons is still the representative of that group and I reached out to him, and, and I'm recommending that we, uh, increase the starting, pay of the greenhouse aid, um, to sixteen ninety-nine, which is parallel to the, para professional salary for somebody in their, uh, on step three. And then, and then there are two greenhouse aids, i- is, as we increase the first one, then we do a corresponding increase to the second one. So Jason has a motion on that.
I move set, starting salary for greenhouse aid, sixteen dollars and ninety-nine cents, and increase the compensation for resisting the, according.
You have a second. Just go ahead.
Building project as well as the eight town where. Overall focus on school morale with a specific focus on administrators, teachers, ensuring that they have the support they need. And work on better aligning our educational vision within our approach to athletics. And extracurricular activities. As a committee, we also decided that we'd like to. Try to focus and commit to meeting on a more ongoing basis. So it's not a once a year type of touch point. Anne, anything else?
Did you, sorry, I got interrupted. We have a baby with a fever here. Is, did you say anything about Richmond?
No, I think that that is still being discussed.
So the next one is, and Christie, I can promote you if you want to show the slides. Christie's gonna speak a little bit about some of the. Summer professional development that's going on with the ninth and 10th grade. Staff, this is in part a follow up to our, our last meeting when the. When the students presented, so she put together. Four or five slides and she'll talk through that and then is happy to respond to questions. No, you should be able Christie to turn on your. Do you want to? You just want to quickly email it to, just email it to me and I'll share. Sorry for the brief delay, we'll get it up in a sec. Did you send it? Did Christie go? But let me see if I could do the other way. Yeah, did you change it since then? Alright. And let me just change it to slideshow.
Okay, and I unmuted, can everyone hear me? So I wanted to join and give an update on the work that the ninth and 10th grade teams have been doing this summer. For their professional learning and. Specifically, the work that they're doing to. Address some of the concerns that came up at the end of the school year, at the last school committee meeting. In addition to planning forward in the work that we're doing for our up leveling, leveling up. And our shift to proficiency based learning. So as you know, we had been working with Tanya Morehead and Gretchen. Osteite. Last spring and they've continued to support these teams through the summer. And then we also began our work with Josh Thomases. And Josh Thomas' Thomas's comes to us from his organization IP squared, the intersection of program and potential. Next slide.
Yeah, no, I know. I'm looking at it and I was moving the wrong thing.
Um, so I think you've heard this from me multiple times, but all of the work we're doing. Is grounded in an inquiry cycle for the teachers and it's tied to. The goal in our district improvement plan where we're building teacher leadership and the team structure that you've heard us talk about. Much over the last four years. The goal is that we're asking teachers to collaborate, to create. And then to deliver the curriculum and assessments to students, then to review. Share work and reflect and we're working with them this summer to improve their practice in teams to do this process. So that there's continual improvement as they work to shift to proficiency based assessments.
Are you good for the next one?
Excellent, sorry, I guess I should say you're at the other end of the room. So the way that we framed our work specifically with Josh Thomases this summer is that teachers have been asked to. Identify a particular unit for the fall where they wanted to either modify or. Aligned. So we're not asking them to reinvent their entire unit of study, although some teachers are doing so more than others depending on the. Where they are in their work to build these proficiency based units out. The goal of the unit and the assessment is obviously that we're trying to have a common standard of excellence for all students. And that came up really clearly at the end of the year. And so that's top priority. That we're aligning to the subject and school priority standards and proficiencies that the. Teachers developed last year as a draft. We're asking students to engage in complex, multi-step tasks. And that is specifically to get at rigor for all students. Where there was much discussion in the PD around what it means to give students feedback and ask students to revise their work. And the differences between formative assessments and summative assessments. So students should be given multiple opportunities to revise and improve because the system is about growth. And what we've asked teachers to think about is how they can include as part of the assessments that they're doing with students. Some public demonstration of knowledge that the student would do. That could be a presentation in class. It could just be something in group work. It could be that they're creating something that they're going to share with their class, their students. We could get to a point where they're actually even sharing with parents. We've had in years past, classes go to the library and do presentations. And those are the kinds of things that teachers are thinking about and they are excited to try it. So. There were several teachers who left the end of that first session with Josh Thomases and had some comments. Like they better understood how performance assessment actually is a necessary component to the work that we're doing in proficiencies. So. It was exciting to end that that day with him in June and we're coming back around with him August 24th and you'll see the timeline in a minute. So next slide. One of the other things we focused on in June was the four components. That are included in the science of learning and that when students, when teachers are structuring lessons. It's important to not just think about the learning itself, the cognition. But learner variability, which often we've been referring to around the differentiation work. We've been focused on with teachers in their instructional practice. But this summer, much of the conversation has centered around, how do you plan units? So that you're building the work for students in a way that's differentiated in advance, not just the, the moves that teachers make in the classroom. A lot of conversation about motivation and the role student voice will play in the classroom around that and how we engage students. And also thinking about the different identities students bring to the space when they're learning. And the last slide, I tried to make the presentation itself short. So I talked about what we've done so far this summer. We had our institute, teachers have been working with Tanya and Gretchen on UDL and differentiation and building these assessments. They're actually submitting their assessments to Josh Thomases and I this week. So Josh and I can look at them and plan for the August 24th date where we're going to be asking teachers. To look at each other's assessments and give each other feedback. And then we're asking them to pilot them in the fall. And in their grade nine and grade 10 team, we'll be asking them to share student work so that they can continue to refine their practice. So that's what our teams have been up to this summer and I think we're all excited about the work. I did not include a slide of another piece of work that we've been doing, which is to. More clearly have some guardrails around how proficiencies are translating into grades for power school because that was another. Concern that was raised. And so I'm just about to a final draft of that document that we will then create. A student and parent friendly version of so that we can message that to parents and students so that they understand. The translation. We hope much better than they did last year because clearly there was some confusion last year in, in the rollout around that translation from proficiencies to grades.
Great, thanks Christie. Are there questions that folks have for Christie?
One question just about, one of the other things that came up, I feel like in the last month, in addition to the grading. Which is around honors distinction. Making it work that's happening in the classroom and not solely outside of the classroom, making sure that it's different work. And not just more work and has that come up at all in this?
So that's actually part of both pieces of the work. It's part of the work the teachers are doing with Tanya, Gretchen and Josh. And again. The thinking is when we talk about differentiation, it's not just about instructional practices in the classroom. It's actually about unit design. So when teachers are developing their units and assessments, they need to not just be thinking about scaffolding supports. For the students who need it in advance, but also what are those extensions that are built in for everyone as opportunities? The tie to the curriculum, tie to the experience. All of the teachers are really on the same page that especially out of the gate, they, the words that are using, which I don't. I don't necessarily like the hidden, but essentially what they're saying is they want the rigorous opportunity provided to every single student in a way where they're not saying. This is the honors distinction piece, right? They want every student to have the opportunity to try it. And then get feedback on, did they meet that or not? And that is part of the document that we're working on. So there's the grading component and then the bottom piece is around the honors. We've also had some conversation about language. And so we've been toying with, is it honors distinction? Do we want it to be honors extension? Do we want it to be honors designation? Because the point is we want all students engaged in deeper learning. And so distinction might have a connotation that's a little. Exclusive, you know, and so it, we haven't landed there yet. That's part of the conversation that's ongoing. I appreciate you bringing that up.
Other questions? And just one question. As far as the staffing goes for ninth and 10th grade, do we have all staff that are going to be teaching those grades at the place?
All but one. So we just found out from our new 10th grade math teacher that we hired last year. That he accepted another job on July 15th. So that's a posting that went up. We have two applicants and we'll be interviewing. Hopefully next week.
Are they coming from a district that has a similar teaching philosophy?
One candidate I don't know well enough and we haven't interviewed that, that I can answer. And the other is a local candidate. So I don't think that they've had a lot of experience.
Do you foresee any trouble of them getting up to speed or you think there'll be enough time to, to get up to speed?
The ideal situation is obviously that they have some experience in this, right? But part of the idea of having the structure of teams that we have. Is that the team leads do a lot of that support of their colleagues and then the departments do. So in math in particular, Kathy and Ed were on the ninth grade team and they're geared up to support the, because we actually have two. New 10th grade math teachers and that's going to be one of the things that they're both engaged in mentoring, our two new math teachers.
Other questions?
And I know obviously it's hard to summarize, you kind of categorize, hopefully lose an outlook of. Two grades worth of entire teams of teachers, but do you have a sense of kind of where, where people are generally at? Kind of at this point in time?
My sense is they're feeling much better about the work this year. The 10th grade team had, had the opportunity to dig in to a lot of this over the course of the year and I. Very intentionally structured two meetings in May and June that brought the ninth and 10th grade teams together to. Begin to have these conversations before school was even out. And those conversations have continued into the summer. And I, they're working very well together and the additional support has been. Really meaningful to all of them, I believe, so.
And we'll continue to come back and update you on this. Do you have one more thing?
One more thing I just wanted to share because I didn't get to share the good news and I did have good news I wanted to share because of our foundation had asked us. Had invited us to apply for a two-year grant cycle to continue to support this work. So we submitted a draft. We got very positive feedback from them and the final proposal went in this week and we should hear by the beginning of September. So I just wanted to make you aware.
So we're, we're very optimistic. Great, thanks Christie. So the next one, and I'll frame this and then Christie and Carl are both available to talk about it. Some. A question has come up and I think probably. As school committee members, you get asked this maybe more than anything. Why can't our seventh and eighth graders participate in high school athletics? So we, we did a little research and I want to share some. Context and then we could have a discussion that then might provoke an additional discussion or some action. But my expectation is that you don't take a vote tonight, but tonight's sort of setting the stage and clarifying stuff. So the, with the MIAA, they're. Super complicated place, complicated organization, lots of stuff's going on. If you go to a school that's. Secondary school, a seventh to 12th grade school on one campus with the same principal. Like many of our neighboring schools, then those seventh and eighth graders can by right. Participate in high school athletics. So Lennox, Mount Everett has Lennox, Mount Everett, Graylock. Lee has some, everybody except us, right? And, and the Pittsfield schools. Has seventh and eighth graders participating in athletics. If you're on the same campus but have different principles. You can request a rule 53 waiver. Which would let middle school, seventh and eighth graders participate in high school athletics. But there are a whole bunch of sort of caveats or conditions around that. They, i- i- if you submit the waiver and it gets approved, they're able to participate. But if there's a JV team and a varsity team, they can only participate at the JV level. If there's just a varsity team, then they can participate at the, at the varsity level. The other thing that's really important is the intent of the waiver is to. Enable high school teams that have issues with participation. To round out a team, but in sports where we have tryouts and even cuts. That wouldn't be an option, right? So, so right now, a- a- and Carl can speak to this in more detail, but. Girls soccer, boys soccer, we have varsity in JV and not everybody makes the team. So seventh and eighth graders are not going to be playing. JV or varsity soccer. The, the other extreme would be boys tennis. Which is very under enrolled and a seventh or eighth grader. If we went through the waiver process could participate in boys tennis because we don't have enough boys. Playing tennis, right? So they're, and it's a little different in, in. In each sport. There are advantages, you get more kids participating. And there are, and there's some other advantages, right? And there. And there's some disadvantages. One of the advantages might be if there's a youth program that doesn't let. Boys above a certain weight participate as seventh and eighth graders, then they could participate. In like football, right? That's an advantage. The other one might be. In the very low weights and wrestling around 100 pounds, there are not a lot of high school kids that weigh 100 pounds. So having a. A seventh or an eighth grader wrestle somebody their same weight could, could, could make some sense. Some of the potential disadvantages is it could potentially undermine existing youth programs. The one might come back and argue that because so many seventh and eighth graders are playing for all the schools around us. The youth programs are already under enrolled, so they don't have many people to compete with, right? So, so that's a tension. The other tension might be if you do six years of a high school sport. With the same coach, you might burn out on the, on the sport. And, and in some cases, there's some running programs, both across country and track. Where seventh and eighth grade girls are really valued and participate a lot in the. The lifespan or the effective lifespan of a high school runner might be short. So they might have great years of seventh and eighth graders. And ninth and 10th graders. And by the time they get to 11th grade, they, they stop or, or, or they graduate and then don't consider. Participating in college, right? So those are some of the things that's sort of the high level overview. I'm open to exploring the possibilities and going sport by sport. For years, our district hasn't done it. Even though other districts have done it. And I think it's worth having conversations about. Either Christie or Carl, do you have anything you want to add? And then we can jump into questions. Okay. And I've tried to be balanced, but maybe not totally.
I thought you summed it up really well, Peter. I don't have anything to add.
I've been in the district for a long time. Is this become a, is this a big issue? I had a coach a couple of years ago asking about seven and eight grade runners. Specifically in a specific, specific northern or urban school. In which he said his runners are being disadvantaged because he's got seven and eighth graders who are weighing anywhere from 60 pounds to 80 pounds. And they jump all over the cross country. And they hop ahead. They are recognized state level. So that's the only time I've heard of this issue. I haven't heard of basketball, I haven't heard of football, I haven't heard of wrestling. I, I don't know. I'm just wondering. We were asking what are the agenda and is it, is it an issue from time to time? I mean, I know we had a particular athlete many years ago who they changed the rule because they wanted. This particular athlete to play a significant sport and it wasn't available because they had this rule. So they changed the rule.
Yeah, so the one thing you're supposed to not do is, is change the rule or, or get a waiver for, for one kid. I mean, there are other sports I mentioned golf, like we don't have a ton of golfers. Yeah, so a- a- and then, and then oftentimes and, and. It, it's very hard being a parent of a student athlete, but, but some parents think their kids. Are really talented and they are, and some think they're really talented and they're kind of talented. And some think they're really talented and they're not particularly talented, right? And, and they're real, they're real tensions there. But this is like, this is the formal structure if we wanted to, to do anything. With it.
And it says consideration should be given only for sub varsity teams. What's the school office on varsity by?
Right. So, and one thing, I'm sorry, Anne just sent me a note that. She can't hear as well as she'd like. So if we could all speak up a little bit, I think it's a function of our technology, but. But let's try to do that too.
Yeah, so I'm actually one of the questions on the agenda. When I last seven plus year early community, most of that parents want to say by our, you know, majority of these are working on, having to make the play certain sports and whatnot. And I have some simple questions, you know, open ears, but there were a couple of things in this past year that really, you know, made me think about it more. But we should spend a few minutes discussing. Firstly was, you know, when the support units in the past, letting practice with all of. Also great ideas we made, you know, two people said, well, wait, take some time, time, which is starting spot, right, from some kids, right? The vast majority of the kids on our team, it would be bad. And most importantly, I know administration and Brittany Carl. Hope we remember, three members, you know, the big thing was those kids, until they go to that school, don't have that sport to play. You know, it gives them the best to play a sport and in the end, doing what's right for the kids. So that I'm thinking, you know, we have seven, eight graders in a district. The MIAA does allow, if I write in our case, waiver, allow those kids to play, why don't we explore that, you know, give them that kind of opportunity? Just to kind of go back as far as the seven and eighth graders, I know every school that's around us, you have to, like Peter mentioned. You know. They all have been doing it for 30, 40 years, others in Western Mass, Mount Graylock, Al, Alwin Gateway, enter. All and do it. I haven't heard of one school that had. Lot of out and said, no, it's not the, the cons throwing away the pros. And so obviously in all those schools, it's a benefit for, for them to. You know, the plus is that way of mine is for all those kids playing those sports. As far as the waiver goes, I, I know Peter just sent out that. But judging from the number of schools, I did a little research on this, we assume more like a formality, that as long as the district feel that it's going to be a positive. Students that pretty, pretty much. And again, it's not going to be very important. I don't see basketball or soccer as a sport where we already are full. But this is definitely all sports, but it would be a positive. Just to kind of give some. NIAA has nine different regions. So we're in the one region we're in, the schools that just in the last 20, 21 year.
I'm just going to sit next to you because they're saying that everyone's. Who have been allowed to waiver and have their seven, eight graders join the high school team, Agawam High School. Amherst High School, Chickaby Comprehensive High School, Chickapri High School, East Hampton, East Long Meadow, Granby, Greenfield, Holyoke. Huzick Valley, Lublow, Northampton, South Hadley, Wocona, West Springfield. So all those, just in this past year. And then looking further in the state, there was 139 schools, not counting all the ones who already have seven, eighth graders who have successfully, successfully wavered. And you know, have allowed their seventh and eighth graders to have this expanded opportunity to play in whatever sports they deem acceptable. You know, there's all types of different schools, almost all, I couldn't find how, how many exactly high schools that were in Worcester, but it seems like every single high school in Worcester does it. Wayland, Westford Academy, Beverly, Manchester, Exex, Swamp Scott, Cambridge, Ridge and Latin. And the really interesting thing that I saw was the three biggest high schools in the state. Brockton, which has over 4,000, Lawrence High School, which has over 3,300. And Lowell High School, which has over 3,000, all three of them have seven and eighth graders playing on the, some of the varsity teams. So. You know, for these reasons alone, I think a pretty strong argument can be made for, for. For at least exploring this, having the administration and Carl ex- explore, you know, whatever sports they think is necessary. Um, but the second thing that, you know, that really pushed me over the edge is that. A lot of you know that I have a, uh, my oldest just finished ninth grade and he played all the sports growing up. Um, you know, football, soccer, baseball, wrestling, the ones he did, like basketball, he got to know most of the kids in those grades. And when he got to high school, I was really taken aback, uh, by the amount of kids who never played any youth sports and just started playing sports in high school. And, you know, it just wasn't, you know, the more fringe sports like a wrestling, swimming, tennis. But some of the, you know, more traditional ones like football, basketball and baseball. So. I had my son ask the kids or I would ask their parents or ask the kids if I, I knew them. And there was definitely a few, a minority who, you know, they could have played some sports, but, but they just chose not to. And when they got to high school, they decided they want to play, but. Absolutely. The majority of them said that they just could not swing it with their family's s- situation, with their schedule, babysitting, siblings, et cetera, that. Um, they wanted to, but they couldn't. And so at this point, it really became an issue of equity. And it was really upsetting because a lot of these kids are really good athletes. And I know they would have had successful seventh, eighth grade careers. They would have been better in high school and. They just, you know, through no fault of their own, couldn't do it. Um, you know, we're blessed again with some great youth programs, you know, Hoozy Hoops, Golden Knights, uh. Southern Berkshire softball, uh, Berkshire Hills. Uh, soccer, et cetera. I mean, great, all volunteer. I mean, basically. The coaches pay money to coach because they don't get paid and they spend a lot of time and their own money to do it. But I mean, you know, times have changed. Not even the last twenty-five, thirty years, but even the last, you know, fifteen, twenty, with the decrease in youth population in the area. Um, it's really for, forced the different sports to kind of expand their geographic footprint. For fielding teams and especially for competitions. And there's, you know, there's a lot of travel now. And, you know, times are different than they were fifteen, twenty years ago. I'm not going to say better or worse, but I think, you know, more complicated. You know, a lot of cases, both parents are working or they're single parent households. And it's really hard to get some of these kids to a practice or a competition to commit to it, you know, from five to seven every day with work, other children, et cetera. Um, and, you know, a lot, in some cases, it's a matter of putting food on the table, roof over the heads or having their kid play sports, unfortunately. Um, now, for whatever reason, these barriers lessen when the kids play on a team from the school. Um, I assume it's because basically the district puts its kids up in, in the morning, they go to school. Practice or games are right after school. They, the transportation is provided. So basically the parent just has to pick them up. At the high school whenever the, the competition's ended. So, um. You know, again, Peter went into there's, it's not. Going to be for all sports. There's some sports just because of the infrastructure, the coaching, the amount of high school kids that can do it. Um, it's not going to be, but for the ones that are, I think it's. I, I think it's a, you know, a, a win-win for the kids. And, um. I really feel strongly that it's something that we should explore or at least have the administration and the AB explore.
I think it makes sense that at this point, the most other people have common tests. Either Christie and Carl will come back most with a. But that kind of exactly been something.
I mean, I was ready to make a motion tonight, but I'll hold it off.
I don't feel like to make sure that they have to hold it upon it. If you had more aware of this.
Uh, and Jason, one of the things we can come back with, we have a sense of it now is. Is i- in very explicit detail, uh, which, uh, which sports, right? So, uh, so, so certainly, uh, a- a- and football's a tough one because there's space on it. But I wonder about the impact of, of a, a small seventh grader being on the football field.
It's not, I mean, you look through, I mean, there's definitely like a lot of sports. Trend that they do, but I mean, like Wayland, they only have one sport, but it's tall for eight graders, you know, I mean, you know. Um, so i- it's interesting if you look at, at the different data, there's all different kind of sports, but I mean, again, I think it's. He's basically modeled after the school choice of the poll where, you know, if there's space available, if there's coaching, if the infrastructure, you know. Space or whatever, then, I mean, I mean, that's the job of the, I mean, we have an AB.
Yeah, no, and he, he's.
So I mean, I think it's, it's very easy for him to ask all these sports. To tell which, which ones to have spaces and work for which ones not.
Yep. So he, Carl's on the call, but he'll come back for our next meeting with a, a little spreadsheet with a. Uh, these are the places where we potentially could do it. And then at that point. It, with maybe some more public comment than, than you all could, could, uh, take a vote on it. Importantly, and, and this is another one of the nuances of this, uh, you were, you don't get blanket approval. You requested for each sport, right? So.
Do you request it each year?
Yes, yeah.
I guess in addition to the list of sports, it might be helpful just to get a broad sense of numbers as well.
Yeah, no, we, we can do that too. So, so Christie and, and really, uh, Peter Falkowski is working really closely with Carl on this. Uh, we'll, they, they'll put together like a, um. Uh, summary of the year past and where we're going forward with numbers in each sport and, and then we could go sport by sport.
I, I'd like also to see the historical aspect. We had years in the fourth year, whole girls basketball, where the JV team had fourteen players. And then the next year, there were five players. And I think that's kind of important to see. Are there trends in the historical perspective being up to now? And what sports tend to maybe need this more than others? So I'd like to, and have an examination, not just for the past year, but maybe the past ten years.
Yeah. No, and, and there's sports that go up and down, right? So.
I, I guess my, my first. I, I, I'm not for this because I see. We'll see a seventh grader physically different than a ninth grader. And even if I don't prepare to get a way, it doesn't, um, I'm not sure how an eighth grade football player. That football player is six four, uh, in eighth grade. How can that match up with, with somebody who's a, a sophomore or junior in high school? I, I just want.
There's not just size, it's muscle maturity too. I mean, there's a huge difference if, I mean, between my son, who was on football, a junior, he was six, three. And then there's a freshman who's six, three, but muscle maturity is a huge difference as an eighth grader. So I can't imagine a seventh grader being six, three, matching the muscle of a junior or a senior. Even if they're the same size.
That's why I think it's going to be important to see which sport.
Yeah. So let's, let's come back with more detail.
Is there any reason not to? Is there any reason to consider activities and extracurriculars in that as well? Are there other things that, that? Could benefit from being a part of, we're opening this up to just sports.
The, the, this part is about sports, but there may be, but I, I'd really like to have a conversation with the, with the principals. Cause if, if we send ten kids from the eighth grade to participate in the high school musical. Then what does that do to the, the middle school musical?
According to this, you can't, no high school student may be cut in favor of the middle class students. So if you open it up to a theater, you have. I have to, my knowledge is a gift of eighth grade who, who have unbelievable voice, better than any kid at the high school. So that.
Yeah, it'd be the same thing, right? It wouldn't be a blanket, all sports. It wouldn't be a blanket, all activities. So is there a debate club happening at the high school level? If it happens at the middle school where that could be an interesting opportunity that's.
Yeah. I mean, what, what's, what's different is this athletics are under the jurisdiction of MIAA. All the rest are our own jurisdiction. So it's a parallel conversation, but the, the. What we choose to do with the rest, we have full control over. Um, and we don't necessarily have to operate within their structure.
September fifth, you don't have to have all permission to do it. One of the reasons we were excited about building all the schools. In the same campus was to have kids work together. I'm not saying we've done anything wrong. And for teachers to go back and forth, so we could do that in the administration to choose to do that.
And, and we don't, we don't do it often, but there are middle school kids who take classes that, uh, at the high school. Uh, not a lot of them, but, but there are some. Yeah, no. Cool. All right. Thanks, everybody. I'm, I'm, Jason, I'm really glad you brought it up and, and we'll go one level deeper. And maybe make some decisions in, in a couple of weeks. Um, the next one, uh. Is, oh, i- so, so normally this is about school choice. Normally I share a school choice update. Uh, in mid-October, based on the October first. Um, um, report, right? But, but I wanted to share an, an early update now. Um, a- about where we are with school choice, uh, a- and I'm sharing it in part because it's trending in a, in an interesting direction. Uh, eight at twelve, we've accepted, uh, an additional sixty-three or. Or sixty-three, uh, new students in school choice. And like Bill was talking about with the other data set, I went back and I, I looked at what's that meant longitudinally? Uh, so, uh, a- a- and it's a little weird because we're in the COVID years, but. But a, a, a big indicator of, or an important one is how many kids, new kids we get in, in school choice. Um, in, in, or combined kids in ninth grade. So in October of, uh, two thousand and twenty, we took in thirty-one. Uh, uh, ninth graders who were school choice. Um, in October of twenty-one, we took in thirty-eight. And we're projecting that in October of twenty-two, we'll take in forty-two or maybe. Right? So it's a little interesting trend from thirty-one to thirty-eight to forty-two. We might end up landing at. Forty-five or something, um, but, but I thought that was, um, worth sharing. A- and it's distributed, uh, pretty evenly, five kids in kindergarten, only one in first grade. Five in second, two in third grade, seven in grade four. Uh, six in grades five and six, uh, four in grades seven and eight, fourteen in grades nine. Uh, a grade nine, five in grade ten, three in grade eleven. Um, and, and one in twelfth grade and maybe one in the wings. It, it is, and, and, uh, one, because it's an actual individual person, I won't tell you the details. Uh, but, but typically you take a senior if they're, um, if they're moving from, uh, another community. Uh, that, that's why, that's why you would, you would take them. Okay. So that's just, it's an early update on it, uh, but, but I, I think it's, um, I think good news. Um, let me go down the, the rest of the things. Uh, so COVID testing and emerging trends and practices. So, um, um, you, we're, Berkshire County is still low. How they calculate it keeps changing. Uh, that being said, this, this latest strain is, is more contagious. Than the previous ones, though the impact of it seems to be, um, uh, less. Uh, we're waiting to see what additional direction we're getting. I included this, uh, in the packet, which. From the CIC people, um, and it sort of shows the trends and, and not surprisingly, there was a spike in. In January after the winter holidays and then a little one in February after the February. Uh, break and an additional little spike in the third week in April, probably tied to the A- April break. And, and then I, I think sort of the May to June spike is, um, is probably connected to end of the year. Activities and, and socializing. Um, I don't anticipate that we'll be doing, uh. Uh, formal pool testing again, uh, going forward. The state's not covering the cost. Uh, and, and, um, uh, rapid test are, are pretty readily, uh, available. Uh, we will be able to test kids who are, are symptomatic. Um, and we're keeping the, the additional nurse on, uh, going into next year and using grand funds to cover that. So, so that'll give us, uh, a, a little bit of coverage. Wh- when I looked at all the numbers, the, the data that we have, which is a little imperfect, it, it looks like about. Uh, forty percent of staff and students, uh, over, uh, over the year, uh. Practiced, uh, COVID at, at some point, but, but forty percent isn't a hundred percent. It's okay. Right? Uh, a- and we should have masks and other things available. I, I know the, the teachers and several staff are concerned about that. And, and I'm going to, uh, fine tune some of that planning and, and come back to you. Uh, what we had afforded people was this sort of additional sick bank if somebody tested positive for COVID. So it didn't come out of their own days. And, and we did that because we don't want people to, to come in. To not lose days and, and then be there and, and spread it. So I, I think I'll recommend that we, we continue that with. With maybe a few minor tweaks. Any questions about, about COVID? Okay, um, the, and I'm just checking. Uh, the next one is, uh, the regional school district planning board. So on. On Monday, uh, Lucy Presker, uh, Jake Eberon and I presented to the Great Barrington Select Board. Which was the last of the, uh, individual select board meetings. Um, that group's work continues, uh, and, and sort of three big things are going on. There's a transportation study going on to try to get really granular detail around the impact of busing and that, what that would be. And how long anybody spends on a bus. We should have, uh, that information, I think in a couple of weeks. And, and the group will talk about it, but we'll also bring it back here. So that's one. Um, the second one is the educational subcommittee is now forming four, uh, little groups. That are mostly school-based, uh, where teachers from both. Teachers and staff and community members from both districts can connect. So one is a K to four group, an elementary group. And, and they're really just going to be sharing what they're doing. Uh, one is a, uh, five to eight group. And they'll also mostly be sharing what they're doing. And, and then the two other groups are a high school group. That's going to look at, uh, educational vision in the context of a high school project. And then the last group is a CVTE group to look at, uh, vocational education and partnerships. Uh, with business. Uh, a- as you know, we've done a lot of work there and Southern Berkshire's done some work there too. Uh, and, and we're not going to start from zero. We're going to start from where, uh, where we've done research. Uh, a- and I imagine there'll be five or six meetings of those, of those, uh, four groups. Um, so that's that. Any questions on that?
Are there students involved in some?
Yeah, th- th- there's a, yeah, there'll, there's a plan for students to be involved. Um, then the, the last group is, um, I'm sorry, the last thing I want to talk about was the, or on this page. The MSBA process. So we had a nice kickoff call with the MSBA. And Steve and Jason and Sharon and Steve Soul and I said it. Uh, did it. And they walked us through those next steps and documents. Um, um, we, we're doing some of sort of the preliminary administrative stuff. Uh, and in, in our, uh, September meeting, maybe the first September meeting or the, I think it's the third and the nineteenth. Uh, I, I may have it a little wrong. Uh, w- we'll be coming back around, uh. Two additional committees, a, a building committee and some sort of outreach committee. The building committee is governed by the MSBA process. The outreach committee, uh, is our own invention. Did I get those dates right, Steve? I'm sorry. Yeah. So the first and then, uh, and then, uh, likely the. Yeah, okay, good. Um, so that's that, uh, with the MSBA. Um, stuff a- a- and we're talking to them and they're going to do some additional work around. Uh, what does it look like if we build a high school for three towns versus what does it look like if we build a high school for eight towns? So I'm very hopeful. It was a really good call and, and it's exciting. Um, who would like to? Share policy or do you want me to do that? I could do that. So, um, we've got three policies to, um, look at tonight. Uh, J E B is around early childhood entering ages. Um, and then one on, on homeless, um, students and their rights. And then the last one is on. And then the last one is on harassment of students. Um, tonight's just the first reading, but on J E B. Um, I'm recommending the policy group met before this. In the paragraph, the second paragraph of early kindergarten, uh, the, the sentence. The first sentence reads priorities given to students to reflect that the priority is for both peer partners. And students with disabilities. And then it goes on, we're going to strike students to reflect that the priority is for. So it, it just is cumbersome. So it's going to read priorities given to both peer partners and students with disabilities. Who've completed a year in the pre-K program. Okay, so that's the only substantive change. Um, to the edits we made, uh, and the rest of the changes are in, in red. So. Um, you, it's just a first reading. We just write it down. There's no.
If there's any other things that people would like to suggest, get them to the theater before next meeting.
Okay, so the second one, um, is around homeless students. A, and this is getting in line, um, with policies tied to audits and other things. So, um, um, the, the changes are in red. The district liaison for homeless students is, uh, is Kate Birdsall. So if there are any questions with. Uh, issues related to homeless students, it goes, or they go to, they can come to me, but I'll refer them to Kate. Um, and, and the other thing is, is tied to busing. So if, uh. We provide busing for in-district students. If somebody's homeless and then they move to another community. We continue to provide transportation to them and that's tied to federal law, right? And it just makes sense because they're homeless. So, so that's that. Uh. A, and then at the tail end of this policy, there's a, a little sentence in red. The district liaison is the director of student services. Um, it's just in a funny place hanging out there by itself. So we're going to move it to after the first sentence of the paragraph before.
So that's the first reading. This will be in the next packet for final one.
Right. And, and then the, the last one, sorry, Steve, I didn't get to was the harassment of students. So, so this is interesting. So there, there are two sorts of things that happen or potentially could happen. There's, there's harassment and there's bullying. And the big distinction between the two is, is bullying, um, um, consists of, of repeated acts. And harassment is around making a, a uncomfortable or an unsafe environment. It appears a little redundant. I think harassment lines up more with federal law and bullying lines up more with state law.
Any questions on any of the three policies? Moving ahead, I don't think any of the other subcommittees have met. So we don't need to go through one. Peter, the personnel report is.
Yeah, so, um, uh, a couple of things that, let me just run through some of them, cause, cause I think it's really interesting. So, uh, Susan Bilado, uh, had worked for us, then she went and worked at the Waldorf School. She's coming back as a math teacher at the high school. So we're excited about that. Uh, John Cortner is a, a new to us kindergarten teacher at the elementary school. Uh, Jake Keplinger, um, is a, our new, uh, band teacher and band director. And he comes to us with like thirty years of experience from, uh, Huzick Valley. So he's super excited. Uh, been in the same role before and we're excited about him. Um, and I heard, uh, both from staff and students who served on the, on the search committee that they're really fired up. Um, so that's great. Uh, Colleen Cordy is a new speech pathologist. She comes to us. Um, um, with a very strong background. And then, uh, Christine Martin. Is a very talented ESL teacher from Southern Berkshire, um, who, um, who comes to us. Uh, to really ran out what's becoming a remarkably strong, uh, ESL team. So, uh, so we're psyched about. Her, um, Celia Armstrong is a new paraprofessional at the high school. Uh, Patricia, uh, Ferrari Behan, um, is our new operator, greenhouse operations aide. Disregard the pay there because you corrected that. So thank you. And, uh, Courtney, uh, Schimman is moving. From the, um, secretary to the principal to the school secretary role at Muddy Brook. And at our next meeting, we'll announce who's stepping into, uh, Courtney's role. Uh, we wish Max the best. Uh, Christie mentioned him, uh, a whole lot of grant appointments. Um, a whole lot, uh, which is great. And then, um, um, going back to our vacancies to be filled. Uh, paraprofessionals in the elementary and middle school and maybe the high school. Um, the two math teachers we talked about, uh, a middle school, high school custodian. And then, uh, a music teacher, the general music teacher, uh, for the middle school. And, and we have a lead on, on that role and, and hopefully can bring that to closure shortly. So for the public, the best thing to do, if you have a question, i- is raise your hand and we'll recognize you.
Yeah. Saying no, uh, you have a good set, we are here.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Have a good night.